And gentlemen, six o'clock, welcome to the Corporate Services Committee. Of the seventeenth of September twenty twenty four. Do we have apologies for absence? I'm pretty sure we do.
We go back to months.
We do, we have councillor, councillor Harvey has given his apologies. Sorry.
No support from us.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone in particular?
Certainly.
Just got lost at the point five minutes, we're walking around with colleagues. Sorry.
You're very welcome.
Councillor Jamie, Mayor councillor Chris Harvey, those are the apologies that are received.
Thank you very much. Two ninety twenty four, minutes of the last Corporate Services, any comments? Thank you very much, we'll take those as read. Two nine one declarations of any disposable cuny interests. No, that's good, thank you very much. Four one three twenty four communications and website report. Hazel.
Oh, right, so this should have been sent around to you all in the agenda pack. And we've got a couple of updates on the press releases that went out. Some of them were kind of pending just at the end of the last report, so they've all gone. And we've had a few more of the unlocking Thetford's potential grant press release go out, so that's good. And we've also obviously put out the letters to object to the redevelopment of Abbey Estates. And we've also, we've put the letter out for the car parking charges as well. And there's been a few other statements that have been released too. In terms of online communications, follow accounts still building on all of our pages, they're all going fairly steady. There has been a little bit of a adjustment to the figures on X, but I don't think we've been too badly affected by it at the moment. But we'll just keep an eye on that to make sure that's still viable for us to use. And Mayor effect of Facebook is still being actively used. Our new civic officers looking at ways to promote, get more engagement on the page and talking to me about a few bits and pieces. She did a really good video for the remembrance services. We're still updating all of our pages with the work that's going on with the town team as well as the education team and all the other lovely bits we're doing. Obviously, if there's any, if anyone would like to share, just drop me an email if you know of anything happening. We're promoting all of our events and. Yeah, go forward, sorry. Facebook's mainly our platform of choice still at the moment. As our new academic year started, we're adding the trips on from the schools. There's quite a lot that's come through this week. So that will be dripping out over the next few days because we've had, I think it's three trips from one of our local primary schools who are sharing the posts themselves as well. So it's great to get young people engaged in it as well. We've also had an article put out by the BBC. One of our officers was approached to give some words about Dr Alan Mims and his role as Mayor of Thetford. So that was in conjunction with the Ancient House Museum as well. So we helped build that article and that was put out last month. And we've also been doing our Throwback Thursday posts. I know a few of you have liked them, so that's quite handy. And we will keep going with those, but it's just finding the bits and pieces as we're going through the archives. We'll put them up. It's been quite nice to show previous Thetford and current Thetford as well. In terms of offline communications, all of the letters have gone out to businesses around Thetford Town Centre. I hand delivered seventy of them with information about the Christmas light switch on the content market, the Christmas trail. And there was also a copy of our newsletter in there as well. It did have information about remembrance as well because it was just the weekend, so all of the shops have been made aware. Newsletter's been distributed since our last meeting, so I think it's twelve thousand homes that's gone to around the town. Hopefully you've all got one. If there is anyone that hasn't received one or you know of anyone that's been missed, just let us know. And we've also got copies in the office for anyone to come and pick up who might not necessarily be from the town itself, but would want to know what's going on. And poster sites still being used, grazing leaflets are being revamped because that all needs updating, our new grazers on there. And they should be ready to go out in the summer. And in terms of the website, that's already launched. Hopefully you're all happy with that. I've had some feedback from some councillors, we've made a few adjustments. The main thing that's come back from councillors has been that they would like to update some of their profiles. If any of you, if that accounts for any of you, it's absolutely fine. If you just drop me an email with details of what you want to update on there, maybe new bio. Or we can sit down and do it together if you prefer. Happy to do that. Some of you of them are slightly out of date now from when we started. And in terms of the layout of the new website, we've also got pages for local volunteer groups and clubs and associations to be listed on. I have started building a little list of a few of them, but if you know of any, do let us know. I've spoken to a couple of councillors about the sports groups. But it's just getting that contact information to put on there so that people have the information in the town. Our community notice board page is going quite well as well with a few things being popped in. That. And, yep, going forwards, we've got a release to come out about the playpots. I'm still working with Nick on that. I just need to get the figures together. I think we've actually made, might be wrong, but savings this year. So it's just about how we work that to say it's great, but we need to keep, you know, the, keep on top of things like vandalism and making sure people are looking after our open spaces. And the Christmas events advertising is going ahead and we just need to make sure that it goes out following that next year with things like the day and other big.
Thank you, Hazel. I've got a couple of comments, anything from the floor first?
Good stuff, thank you.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, echo that. I hope to speak for us when I say the website is a vast improvement on the previous one, which again was a vast improvement on the one before that. So we're going in the right direction and thanks very much for all your hard work on that. It's really appreciated and I think reflects on the whole town council for its favour. I do have a question for you. I think it was at the last Corporate Services meeting, you were talking about Twitter.
Yep.
And you were saying, we don't get any engagement on it, it doesn't really work, all the rest of it. For those unaware, there was a huge exodus from Twitter over the weekend towards Blue Sky. Is that something we would do or should we just use the power of them?
And we're still, I'm still monitoring our Twitter. We haven't had that many people go from it. And I think it's kind of pretty much fairly stagnant on the Thetford Town Council one. Obviously, I'm not sure how many of those profiles are active because there isn't any way of testing that. And we will keep an eye on it. The markets page hasn't really seen much of an increase, but it is something we monitor. And I might look into Blue Sky, but obviously it just depends on feasibility of whether it's worth us using it. I know Breckland have moved over to Threads, which is.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so.
It's off the Instagram.
Yeah.
So it may be something we'll investigate going forward, but yeah, we'll just see. Okay, get some advice on that.
How much does it cost to be a member, to be using the Twitter pages?
They're all free.
They're all free.
Yeah, we don't.
You don't make any contribution at all.
So you can subscribe to a premium platform, but we don't because there's not really much purpose in us doing it.
The situation, I'll just add to that. Situation with Twitter is you can pay for a verified account, a blue tick. That used to mean that you were given, a blue tick was given rather than paid for. It used to mean that you were a preferred account. It now means really that you're bottom of the pile, doesn't it?
As a point of principle.
There would be no justification for paying for a blue tick.
The point of principle should be not be moving away from that. Twitter are getting rather right wing and.
Yeah, I think you've fallen into a little bit of a kids' pool trap there and obviously we have to be very, very careful to be completely non-biased. Obviously, we'll keep an eye on things if there is any content that starts appearing.
Yeah, it's the anti-COVID, anti-injection and stuff like that. That's political, that's sort of, you know, conspiracy theorists type stuff. I'm a bit uncomfortable.
Yeah, unfortunately you get things like that on every platform. Funny enough, we've had a conversation about this earlier. At this point, we are still getting people follow us, we are still getting residents wanting to use it and obviously it's another thing. But yeah, it will be definitely monitored to go forward if there are calls to government's movement, we will do.
Can I make a suggestion there, David? If, if you, if you feel that way, and I think it is a reasonable argument, it's certainly why I left the platform. If you feel that way, bring it to Corporate Services for the next meeting. We can put it before the committee, open it, potentially to full council, see how we get. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something a bit of you when we break into the meeting now. Welcome to the meeting. You were a little late. Did you have a question to ask?
I want to see what's happening.
Okay. Okay, well, I just thought I'd give you that option. Okay, thanks very much. Back into the meeting, back in the room, four one four approval of payments.
To the five regulations, we have to table all payments made to the finance, you know, corporate service committee. We have done that, we run it from one meeting to the next meeting. Every single payment that's gone through our bank account is included on these schedules. Previously, we used to put them as attachments, but we've actually managed to put them into the body of the agenda pack. They're nearby there and they're all listed. If any councillor would like more information through you two, I'd like to offer that they can certainly ask for the transaction number and we'll get the supporting documentation to them. But every single payment is there.
Okay. Comments? I'll look at you councillor Jefferson.
I don't actually have any, no.
We're all okay with that. So that is, we approve the payments. Everybody agreed?
Yes. Agreed.
Very much.
Proposing second.
Oh, okay. Could I have a proposal to approve the payments, please? Second, Adam, thank you very much. All in favour? Against abstentions? David, you didn't raise your hand on any of it.
Just round the back.
I'm sorry, I'll take it. Four one five, logging and reporting of complaints.
This again, in terms of our current policy, we have to put this in the agenda of this particular committee. There are no, there is nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Four one six, personnel report. To receive notes and discuss personnel report covering personnel matters since the last meeting.
So what we've done is we've just updated it with some of the training that we've done. The focus of all our training has been about performance management. As you know, we, the project director council, the HR department have come and provided consultancy to us. We've, they've developed the HR, the performance management, the stop restructuring, the job descriptions. We now have gone through training on performance management and we're looking to introduce that from the second of January twenty twenty five. The other issue to notice is that we've had two new staff members, a new civic officer started on the twenty first of October and a new event coordinator started on the twenty eighth of October. And those positions are for twenty hours a week. And that's really it. So my recommendation to the committee is to note to report.
Any further comments? Thank you very much. That's noted. Four one seven, financial report for seven months ended thirty first of October twenty twenty four. To receive and discuss the financial report for seven months. Look to you.
Okay. For the first time this year, I've actually done a forecast, but actually ended the financial year. There's a little bit of gloom at the moment because there's a number of things that have had impacts on that. We are forecasting a deficit, so that as management team, we have to sit down and start addressing that. Looking at the key causes of that and taking action to do that. I haven't had a chance to discuss this with the town clerk, but we'll certainly, next week we'll start focusing on, on the forecast and what we can actually do to reduce that particular deficit. We've all, the one thing that I, we've done exceptionally well is all our expenditure is booked. We do not, I don't, I'm not sitting at the door for a voice somewhere. Everything that comes in is normally booked on the same day that we receive it, if not then the next, the next day after that. So I'm very confident that we have all our expenditure booked. We've got some income that we still got to bill. I think this BVR two and a half thousand. And we've got to bill Norfolk County Council six thousand pounds for some of the work that we've done at the bus station that they've agreed to, 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 to pay. In terms of the key financial challenges, I've set them out to the report. We've got restructuring and salaries. What I understand that, presently understand that, is that even though we budgeted to title part of the staff to the Carnegie Guildhall Charity, which we forecasted in the first of October, and we will still be under, or slightly over our budget on salaries. And I think that's quite reassuring because that was potentially could have a big implication on the, on our current budget if we didn't establish the Guildhall Carnegie charity. The other thing is we, we've really, it's taken us ages to move out of King's House. I think on the second of December, we removed the last bit of papers that have been stored there. They're ready to come in, they come into this room on the second of December. And from here, they'll be either archived or shredded. We've got so many years of paper there and that's, you know, that's a big problem to tell us, but the whole team is focused on doing that going forward. The, once, once you start writing these reports, they become quite routine. You know, this report is not significantly different to the last report that did. We've got some key cost drivers, vehicle costs. We are, the town team managers have been working very hard on trying to get an alternative for that. We have a challenge in terms of do we purchase vehicles outright, the availability of vehicles, looking at alternative hiring rates. And that exercise is going on at the moment. This is one of our key cost drivers. We are spending huge amount on vehicles. We've got a far greater team, we need more resources. Previously, even when we had a small team, you know, if a staff member was working in Barnham Common and someone needed to see them, they had to pack everything in because there were two or three staff members come to the Barneggi, sorted out and then go back out to Barnham Common. That's how, how, the kind of situation that we were operating at. So we need to address that. The open space management is a key cost to us. We've managed to get sheep grazing on Carstamount. Those have, you would have also noticed that we've got sheep or they look like goats on Ford Bed, and they are sheep, I can assure you. And we just try to get more cattle onto Barnham Common. We've got a problem with gulls. So we're going to try and get our volunteers to do that, but we're also having to look at, at quotes for contractors to help us get get it addressed so that when the graziers come the next season, we don't have the same particular challenge. But this has taken up, the grazing has probably taken up thirty percent of the town team manager's time from, you know, August, September, October. So it has been quite a significant challenge in getting this addressed. And in terms of the Guildhall Carnegie complex, the bar GP has improved, all our income has recovered a little bit. But these are still lower than budgeted, so again, we have to address that. Those who attend the Heritage and Events Committee will know that we've tried to drill a lot deeper into the financial information, trying to make a lot more sense of it. And then, once we have that, we can actually start taking some steps. And the toilet contract ended, we forecasted to end on the first of April, it actually ended, it's limited on the first of August. So there is that saving. We battled to employ a new staff member because the department's due that. So I think it's been on, sort of, the actual contract, but we've also undisputed the community and environmental services star. The building maintenance is a major problem. Every day, someone knocks on our door and just says, this is broken. We've discovered that the, the wrong heating boilers have been put into one of the, into the kitchen, the Carnegie kitchen. The toilets here on this side, we're not connected to the hot water supply. How that happened, I have no idea. I discovered that at four o'clock this afternoon. And there's just other things, it's just, it's just, whatever we do, the people are just knocking on the door and just saying, you had a problem here, you had a problem there. And the challenge for us offices, and I think this is a significant challenge, is do we ignore it or can we fix it? You know, because it doesn't go away unfortunately. And that's the situation that we're sitting, sitting down now. And then it's really just a matter of managing our assets, you know, we have to come up with asset managed plans going forward. We're starting to do that, but it is a significant task and there's a lot of kind of neglected maintenance that's been sitting there. So it's a very gloomy, gloomy financial report and I do apologize for that. But it just highlights the challenges that we as managers, have, management have to address going forward. Last, that's it.
Thank you, Alan. Comments from the floor, please?
Um, I'll begin with, thank you for your time on this, to creating this, I do appreciate it. And I'm now going to proceed to turn it to shreds. And the, so reading through it, and I apologize if I'm even to the next agenda item as well. So I'm just going to read everything I noted down going through it. I was quite shocked at quite a fair few parts of it. This will be overspend. We need to ensure that we finish this year on budget or with an underspend. We cannot go, have an overspend. And forgive me if I'm just dropping off a list, it's just the way I wrote it down. I'm concerned that the things that are causing us to go into an overspend are the ones that are not being prioritized. And we knew there was an issue with the Guildhall Carnegie waste bins for a long time, for example. That was slow to be acted on. We've now incurred costs because of that with the vehicles as well. We've spent twenty two thousand this year so far leasing vehicles against a budget of twelve for the whole year. And we still have five months left to go. And it's not, I think we're going to actually push that to a full council meeting to discuss how we go for that. And a huge issue as well is, as you said, the overspend's large due to not moving out of King's House quick enough. We agreed on, as a council, to terminate the lease on the first of April twenty four, we're in November. So I just need us telling at some point when we are going to full stop, finish, be done, because the, that's one of our largest costs on. Another one we're overspending on is because we didn't move to the Charitable Transfer Guildhall Carnegie and we have resulted in paid massive business rates. Again, this was agreed in May twenty three, it was included in the manifesto, which we all adopted, and there has been no movement on that. And we need, as, sorry, you can have a lot, a lot to answer for back in, and I do apologize, but if I stop, I will lose my train. And we do need to address the issues with vehicle leasing. It would create revenue saving. So next year's budget, for example, assumes ten K a year on vehicle leasing. If we were to purchase the vehicles out of reserves and own them, we would be able to save ten K where available. So that's excellent. And focusing on the Guildhall Carnegie, again, we need to, I think when I ran the proposal as well, it's been pushed to, it needs to be from the first of April twenty five. We can't keep pushing that further and further back because the rates on that alone are going to absolutely cripple us. There's quite a lot. We don't know exactly the profit and loss of the Guildhall Carnegie complex. We are plowing an unknown amount of money into it. And we also applied and were given lottery funded money for the Guildhall Carnegie. That was used to pay for two staff members. That money's gone, we're footing the bill. We're also directly funding, funding the groups which were mentioned at Heritage Events the, the other week. Are the, are we being reimbursed for Hillary from Stannyforth anymore? The rent seemed low for Guildhall Carnegie. We need to look at space management for Barnham Common. The hanging basket contracts, when you read through it, is twenty nine thousand. We need to look at bringing that absolutely in-house. Fifteen K a loan on tree surveying. And why are we surveying trees every year? What is the legal minimum to survey a tree? Because fifteen K on tree surveying to me is mental. And I'd rather have money to do the work that reports tell us are needed rather than just keep constantly doing it. And grass cutting at the cemetery has gone from ten K to twenty K a year. Again, can we look at doing that in-house or can we look at a separate contract for that rather than tying it into a bigger contract? Because, yeah, I've just thrown a lot of numbers and a lot of words, I am sorry, but it was quite a shock to read. And I do think with the few months we left of the financial year, we need to absolutely do some things to plummet that down. I digress.
Exactly, as well. I think in terms of, if you had a call to Guildhall Carnegie, we had, we had a capacity for strength, you know. It, we were running short at CEO management level and a lot of excuses, I had many excuses. But we had that, we had that reality, we really battled from, from, from the capacity perspective. And I think having the Utah Clarks on August has made a significant difference. You know, people used to come to my office and ask me why nothing changed on my to-do list because, you know, we had one or two days to get those past that and it was pretty difficult. I think it's really just a matter of, if I just run through some of them. Barnham Common, we have to address that. Our open space management has been the bane of this council for quite a while. And it's because we, the grey, organizing the graziers, having those management plans in place and actually appearing to the, has been a challenge. The tree survey, you know, we legally have to have our trees surveyed. We have a very good, up-to-date program. It does actually save us money. We had a big claim against us, we suffered claims, one of our trees had damaged it. The first thing the insurers did is ask us, well, when's the last time the tree was surveyed? And it was actually right now to give them the survey notes and say, this tree was surveyed and the insurers repudicated, repudiated. Got rid of the claim, oh, sorry, renounced the claim. It's not the, not the right word. And I think some of the things that you talked about are future things that, in terms of this, contract is what we really have to focus. We're applying to Breckland Council for grants to hopefully help on some of the floral displays. There's a lot of things, but the point I want to make, and I, I don't think I made it strong enough in the paperwork that I distributed, so I have to take responsibility for that. Is that we're just at the beginning of a budget process, we're not at the end of the budget process. So there's a lot of work that we have to do. The Porton clerk is coming, you know, she's been on leave, she comes back tomorrow. So she's going to, you know, take a little bit of flack for this, but we've got a document to start with and that's really what we're looking at. We're not saying it's the end result. We're starting the journey, we're not ending the journey. So a lot of the comments that you've raised, we have to address for this year and like I said, we have to address for next year. So I don't know, I hope I've spread around some of the issues, but, but, but it's to make that point as clear as possible. But I hope that does give you a little bit of reassurance.
I'll answer, but I'll come to the bottom of the list and do other people first.
I'm sorry, apologies, I've got that down first. I'm sorry, as you might expect, I've got a couple of very granular things to check on. Firstly, I just, if I was reading it correctly, I wanted to check, and I appreciate that, I think you've split out in the expenditures tabs or the salaries, the individual salaries for different departments. You've got the heritage and event salaries. And if I read that right, you've got Carnegie Guildhall salaries. So just want to, basically on the line that says salaries, heritage and events, this expense is lower than budgeted as salary increases, budgeted, not yet been incurred. It looks like it's not bad. It looks like the reason it's lower than budgeted is because it should be under Carnegie Guildhall salaries. Or have I misunderstood what that is?
I think the difficulty we have is it's just the cost allocations. And one of the reasons why was the data that was in the budget now to give, I had the intention to, to focus to see it. So I tried to do it at a disaggregated level.
Yeah.
All our data is not disaggregated, it's all aggregated data. So I made a decision to go back to aggregated data. So some of the cost allocations in the financial report, we've started unbundling those costs. But I don't think we have it completely right and we haven't amended it since the final staff restructuring was done. So the salaries in total are correct because.
Yeah.
But it's just the budget and that, so maybe the explanations are not as.
So the reason that Carnegie Guildhall salaries and the salaries heritage and events, there's a variance, negative one, positive the other, and that almost exactly is not actually related to the.
You, if you can look at that, yes. It was just that we tried to start, we started the commercial side of it. But if the variances is, is offset, then, then that's, that's the reason it does.
Okay, so it's just.
It's just an allegation. What we're going to do, sorry, what we're going to do, we've got the final budget, we have to go back and disaggregate it for the last few years so that we actually understand and, and actually present it. So you have a trading account for the Guildhall Barneggi. You have a trading account for part of the Heritage and Events. You have a profit, you know, a profit, if I've got a profit loss account for all the other things that we do, the adoptments, the cemetery, things like that. But we're not at that stage yet.
Okay. Do you mind, sorry, I know, but. No, you can go on. I also wanted to pick up on particularly on vehicle leasing, and Matt's already touched on it. If I was reading it correctly, I tried to compare it against with August and it, I seem to remember in August we said we're spending more on vehicle leasing, we need to address this. Um, if I was reading it correctly, I tried to compare it against with August and it, I, I seem to remember August we said we're spending more on vehicle leasing. We need to address this. I'm thinking we've spent since August, um, six and a half thousand pounds on vehicle leasing.
It could be just, it could be a timing because we, we accrue invoices, sorry, we process invoices as soon as, as they, as soon as they arrive. We've had one small little challenge, which has an impact on that and we've had a little bit of damage. So we've had someone drive into a wrecked vehicle, our chair. We've had, uh, uh, quite a bit of repairs. So I'd say about a thousand of that is repairs and maintenance costs that we've had to pay because our staff. Uh, um, had been a little bit not, not as careful as possibly they should have been. So we are paying four thousand pounds a month on vehicle leasing.
I guess it's actually even more than that if we're talking about what August to.
Yeah, it's about four thousand.
Yeah. And are we, like, that absolutely comes to an end, but that was like a big error. You should just, pretty much, four thousand pounds is not. I mean, that's, uh, shift back to my match, my twelve times four, fifty, six thousand? Forty eight, thank you. Yeah, someone's got an extra, you know, forty eight, that's a huge round compared to what I spent our, our actual budget was, right?
I mean, part of the challenge we have is, we also have, you know, one of the things that we had the meeting before this meeting, the working group meeting. Is we also had, you know, we've got cash deficit ratios. So regarding by vehicles, you know, we, we, we had to, we put it back short. Because the proportion of our fixed investment income, oh, sorry, our fixed investments to, uh, liquid investments is actually very, very high. So part of, part of addressing that is the meeting we had earlier on where we talked about how do we change the, the structure of our investment portfolio to make it more.
Is that part of the way? Because if, four times as much as the budget on vehicle leasing, I know it's very easy to come on faith, but that. There's, there's obviously the Guildhall charity, which is also a bit, but four times as much as expected on vehicle leasing seems a massive difference. And it was flagged last month, but I didn't think it was this extreme, so.
So if I just quickly jump in, apologies, David, we'll get you. If I just quickly jump in, um, Adam and Matt are already aware of that because they were here earlier. But the plan is to release investments to liquid capital. Can I say, Alan? Um, I mean, purchasing these vehicles, we've agreed it, um, in other committees. Can we get on with it as soon as possible? Because this feels unsustainable right now. Uh, I, I, I think, um, in, in all good faith, that, that, just that release of capital. Could very quickly release the pressure on that issue, hopefully, hopefully. David?
Um, uh, three things. I mean, first of all, Matt went through a wonderful list. Is it possible that those questions could be put in writing somehow and they're addressed? So they come back to us and, and have bit by bit and when it's going to be done. Um, we did tree surveys where we live and we involve B T O because they have some amazing people there. From memory, we did them every six to seven years. You have to say there's a planning movement for them. You don't have to do them every single year. And, and the other thing is if we really, really stretched with, with personnel, I have this thing about at the moment, we, we agreed or we were looking at. The huge two-week Christmas shutdown. If we've got twenty odd people of staff, it's been shut down for, for ten days. That's two hundred working days we've lost. Surely that would make a, a bit of a hole, a bit of a dent in some of the work that's outstanding. You know, and we keep kicking that down the road. That's an expense that we should really address next year. We should have gone last, you know, a few months ago, but, you know, we didn't.
It is a issue that we, has been flagged to go to the April twenty twenty five agenda for this committee.
It needs, yeah, okay. I, I would really would like that strongly looking at if we're saying we're not getting things done and it's costing us money.
Regarding your first point, David, can we put them in as actual plans? Do we do that?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I think what you'll do is, if, if the, if the committees might as do that, we, we come back and have another meeting in January where we talk about the future stuff. So, and we can report back on, on, on the budget system. So I'm more than happy to do that and say.
I understand the work, I have to report, I will certainly do that. But you went through so much stuff. It would be nice to, to know some of this for a long time, but I know you've got so much on.
Bringing that subject up for the meeting in April, presumably that's in time to deal with it for next.
Yes. Yes, thank you. You stole my point. So thank you. I was going to men- mention that. What I was going to request is how I wanted it written, but. Sent in what immediately you want. Um, if we could create a list of the biggest things that are causing us going overspend and how we can move those along ASAP. Um, with the priority being on estimated timeframe to start the Carnegie Trust, estimate timeframe to finish the move from Kingstown officially. And then an action plan on purchasing the vehicles from reserves and then the contracts regarding hanging baskets in Semadrid. They are the biggest things I see as a way to dramatically bring down costing.
At the end of the week, it'd be good.
By tomorrow, please, it'd be fantastic. Yeah, whatever. They're, they're the main issues I'm buying.
I'm, I'm afraid I'm going to have to caution you here. Alan goes on holiday tomorrow.
It's not good enough, Alan.
A well-deserved holiday on my hands.
It's midnight then, Alan.
Yeah, it's a bright suspenseful. No, um, whenever you're ready for next meeting, yeah, that's okay.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you very much. Do you want me to send you?
Yes, I, I, I think, I mean.
You've got a recording, of course.
True, I do have a recording.
Just listen to me back.
Um, but I, but I, but I really think, you know, with, I, I have, I, even though I have another day tomorrow, I have a needy schedule with the time clock when we'll start talking about these things and our own prioritising. So I'll be sitting with a glass of wine in my hand, she won't, but, but that's a good idea. But, but we, we've really, I, I, there is an understanding of it. But it's just so difficult, you know, the time team manager that has got twenty balls in the, the air and that's really what our challenge is, is, you know, so we've got to address how do we get things done?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any more? Um, all good points raised, I think, I would say. Um, so we need to approve that report. Yeah?
Just, I think it's, oh, you do need to.
Yeah, yes, it's approved, yeah, so. Cover proposer and seconder please. Proposer Ron, seconder David. All those in favour? Are you in favour?
I propose it.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I'll take this again.
I'll take that as your number second.
Uh, Adam, seconded, did you?
I think Ron proposed.
Ron probably seconded.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, four one seven, uh, financial report for the seven months ended. No, we've done that. Who am I talking about? Drop budget for twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah. This is, this is a very first stab at the project. Like I said, it's the beginning of the process. I got the pre-step information on Thursday, uh, um, Thursday morning. Uh, and that's how we calculate what the increase, what the pre-setters, what the increases of pre-setters. Uh, the preset, the property band indicator has gone up by two point five four percent. So what that means is if we didn't increase, uh, the preset on a band D, uh, residence. We would still get two point five four percent more income than we would have last year. Uh, we've got a number of challenges. Uh, um, the I T infrastructure, we have to, you know, is, is, is there, we have to invest. I mean, it took an update on that bar, started at two o'clock, finished just before five o'clock. You know, for a small update on, on the, if the I T infrastructure in this building is shot me there. So the council approved it as extraordinary meeting to actually invest in, to, you know, rush to invest in that. Hopefully that will make the difference, have operational differences. Um, we haven't, um, we, we've got a backlog in training. We do more and more work. Our time team are starting to work on near roads and highways and things like that. They're actually training to be able to do that. Otherwise we have to change what we do as, 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 as a council. Um, we haven't budgeted transfer operations of the Guildhall Carnegie at this particular stage. Because there's a lot more work that has to be done. So we've left them as being in this, in this first draft budget. Uh, one of the key issues is what do we do for V E Day and how much do we spend on V E Day? Uh, that was a question asked at the Heritage and Events Meeting last week and it's something that we have to come and answer. We've just put in twenty thousand at the moment. Whether that's, whether that's too much, there's a little bit more work that has to be done. Um, and the biggest, I think the biggest cost driver in, in, in the budget is what we do as our open space and, and floral, and floral display, uh, contract. You know, we got that at, 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 at a very low cost. It's not going to be renewed at a very low cost. So just from the prudency perspective, I've just had to double that, those costs. And that's why I think we need to ask the question, why is, you know, grass cutting at the cemetery going from ten thousand to twenty thousand? It's because we've just doubled all the costs because that's the figure we're working at the moment. We are trying to get new costs. We are looking at alternatives, like say rainwater harvesting, uh, growing our own floral displays, things like that. As all projects that we find Britain Council for, but it is a, 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 a significant challenge. And lastly, we've really got to look at our assets. You know, our assets are not in the best of shape. Things like the buildings, etc. And we have to do something about that. So the, 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 the first draft budget really is, is, you know, I think you'd fire me as a, as a, as, as, as corporate services manager. If I put my hand in pot and said, this is what we have to raise, we've got a lot of work to do in it. But it just gives us an indication of the scope of work that we have to do. Uh, uh, and we've got a little bit of certainty now that we have the property indicator. Second thing I just, just do, I put down some dates around the programme to get the agenda, uh, the budget finalized. Uh, normally Britain Council gave us the thirty first of January to do that. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the target is the twenty fourth of January. If we don't submit something, they don't, they just use a piece set to do whatever they like. So we have, that's a date that we have to play by. So what we've done is I've just suggested a timeline, the seventh of January to, uh, twenty twenty five to finalize the budget. Uh, at the Community and Environmental Services, the fifteenth of January to finalize the budget at the Heritage and Events Committee. And this committee meets on the fifteenth of January, uh, uh, to finalize, uh, uh, the draft budget. Uh, and then the next day we have a, an extraordinary council meeting to approve, uh, the budget that this committee will recommend to full council.
So we have to bring that, we have to bring that meaningful because otherwise, if we did it in the normal diary events over the month. We'd have to push the whole thing a month forward. So this is to say three weeks, isn't it, basically?
I mean, for council in January, it's only three years of January. We have to have the information to Britain Council by the twenty fourth of January. So that gives you an indication of, of, of the changes. And I will hide in the bunker now, avoiding the rocks.
I'll put Matt first. Yeah, um. Income in terms of shreds again. Um, so the increase in council tax, um, suggestion, we cannot increase that more than five percent. Um, we have a manifesto commitment. It's what, as we're elected, and that's what the rest of the council voted to adopt. That we will not raise council tax more than inflation. Um, so we cannot have that higher than five percent. Whether we need to cut our budget or achieve efficiencies elsewhere to honour this, we will have to do that. Um, the V E Day, um, and V J Day combined. Um, I'm glad that it was me and you at Heritage and anyone else who was at Heritage. We did say Plan B. I think twenty K might be slightly a bit too big. If we could maybe look at starting with a, a maybe, a, a top land of fifteen, I mean, we, the most expensive event we've done is the Christmas lights, which on, which is about three K. To go from three K to twenty for an event is a hell of a jump. Um, I, I completely, I'm not going to be too based and be like, we never said that. We absolutely said budget high and bring it down. Um, but the twenty K budget is kind of just forced me a little bit. Um, but yeah, the most expensive is three K. We should probably, to do an event, double the size. We were expecting to look at around six to ten thought of maximum. So at least the proposal idea of dropping it to fifteen K maximum. But a working budget of six to ten is, is a lot better. Um, the budget highlights, um, I need to invest in I T. Um, can I request, when you are back from the holiday. Um, a plan with quotes and details on it. We as a council have been throwing money at our I T services. And I know we've done a lot of meetings, um, where we have, um, discussed how we're going to change things and maybe to find rock, you know, all the expenses, the internet issues that we have. We are throwing money at it. There is no way forward. So if we can look at how we're going to invest in our I T and a plan and quotes and details on how we can move that going forward. And the other thing was I noted, and I'm sorry if this was the agenda item before, I think it was this one, but issues with, um, staff not sufficiently trained. Have we done a skills, a skills audit? We have a H R firm that we can hopefully attain that for us. If not, we can do that ourselves. Um, is there a costed training plan and what we're going to do to bring those people up to the correct levels that they should be? We can't just throw unnecessary money at training. It's got to be tailored. It's got to be specialised in for the field. And also, um, I did note what procedures do we have in place to recoup training costs when staff leave? I think we agreed, and I should know this, I wrote the contract.
Um, we agreed to golden handcuffs.
Yeah, and it was Sonia's discretion is what we finalized on the end. Did I retell quite to discretion?
Something so. I think there was a structured plan over the course of the year. Am I right?
Oh, sorry. I, I think we, we gave it to Sonia. I think we gave it to her because it was hard to gauge what we would be, you know. Fifty pound manual handling cost sort of thing would be difficult to, not necessarily quite much, I think. But if we just iron that out. Um, do we have a procedure in place to confirm to recoup those training costs if we do pump two, three K on a, on a training plan for someone and then they leave within a year? Um, but yes, that's.
Which I would go into detail. I think just, um, the, the, to comment about pre-set, we understand. I mean, I'm, I, you know. I just, we, we, we're an organisation, uh, the public holds us to account. We have scrutiny. We have to take them into account and I, but, you know, I don't have to pick up the rocks or duck the rocks under the, the councillors do. So we, we very much applaud that and really much understand that. Uh, just in terms of the, uh, the V, V Day, Christmas lights, which should also include the contract, but you have all the Christmas lights displays. So three grand is the actual event and then, and then we also have the other costs, but your comments again, I've noted that we shared it. Training, what we're looking at is, is we're not looking for bespoke individual training. We're just looking for basic training. You know, our first A training, the, the test, you know, it's expired for most of the stock. We have to have it. Uh, fire training, we have, we have the public in the building. We, you know, that's, that's now due. We have to have it. If we have bespoke training, you know, uh, like I'll give you an example, when a by-staff member just want to go and, you know, get another A A T. That's the one that the handcuffs will actually cover. And we'd have to look at the affordability of that. Like, you know, at the moment, where the budget's going, it's probably not affordable. So we won't do that. But all the training that we're doing at the moment, we are looking at skills, what they need and then doing it. And it's more general training. It's more around the time team members than anything else because their roles expanded. You know, they're, they're doing roadside work which they never did before. They're doing, you know, painting up ladders all, all over the street because we're expecting more and more of them. They're the ones that actually the, 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 the do it. So, and then like I said, you know, the open spaces are, and vehicles are our biggest challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, firstly, thanks for bringing us together and the calendar, like the timeline. That's really helped you to know that. At the time, I think that's why I saw it talking about. And that means just having that sense of when we need to do things. Really appreciate it. So thanks for that. Completely recognise this is the first draft and you've not had much time to prepare it. But firstly, I may have commented on it, but I have to echo Matt's comments again about the pre-set. We really need to, we can't have it that, we just can't. And if that means going back to the committees, uh, we're on a head to prevent saying, I'm sorry, your plans are that. You need to reduce it. That's fine. That's what we need to do. We can't go back. Um, I think that's clear. Um, I just wanted to particularly ask about the I T infrastructure as well. Um, I thought we literally did last quarter, we, again, we invested quite a lot in efforts from reserves about, um, in terms of upgrading the I T infrastructure. What I think the structure of, do we still need to do? Why isn't it not coming to come out more reserves considering I feel like that's a long-term contingency cost rather than suddenly we should be going, ongoing cost to my understanding. So I'm sort of a bit confused as to why it's included in this part of the budget when, when we've just done it and funded it from reserves.
I think in terms of the bigger investments in fibre optic that we, that we created the last one, uh, I think some of the operational contracts, uh, are, the new provider is a little bit more extensive than the old provider. But we have, so that will be, it will be a budget cost, but efficiencies that we should get should be significant. So, so should we get productivity savings? I've just, you know, I will sit down and, I've, I've guessed what needs the last speed. I've got, I've got the contracts and I, and I put it in. I still think that we need to look at our infrastructure a little bit better, what we're actually using. So whether we have to buy some applet or whether we buy additional software, that's the type of infrastructure that, that, that I think we, we need to look at. We've got to have the right, you know, uh, uh, um, software. We don't spend very much on software, you know, we just use the basic office. Some of us have got Adobe. We spend money on realtors for our allotment system. We spend money on our, um, uh, scribe for our burial cemetery system. We spend sage for our accounting system, uh, uh, and those costs are going up. But are we, you know, with sage, we could do so much more with it. But we have to invest, we have to spend money on it to, to actually get the benefit. And we're just going to do this for benefit of the analysis now.
Okay, I'll be used to seeing, I think, because, yeah, I'd like to understand that. So, so can I?
I, I will just add in, I, I'll speak to, you know, I have my monthly meeting with Sonia. When I speak to her, one of the things that she said, you know, I'm always saying, how can we help you? one of the things that she said, you know, I'm always saying, how can we help you? And one of the ones that she often said is that much of the IT hardware isn't fit for use and it needs upgrading. So that could be one of the things we could do that would most improve productivity, I hope.
Which, I'm dying to does, I just want to make sure we've got it, because I don't understand why it's come from, where it's come from, and that we know it's going to happen in product that does be what it says on the tin, rather than.
Yes. And there may be, I I think there may be conversations to have around that.
Um, sorry, do you mind?
No, no, carry on.
The other thing was, obviously, we talked about it already on the existing budget. I I get the need to be small, so conservative and, you know, budget carefully, but it doesn't include the transfer of the operations to Guild, Carnegie Guild or Carnegie Complex or Charity in the entire financial year. That seems very cautious if we, I mean, I'd like to understand why that is and, you know, what we could do to lead that along. So that's, that obviously, we talked about it in the current budget, it's been one of the biggest strengths of our current budget. I mean, everything trying to plan a budget with that for an entire year seems to be tying our one arm behind our backs.
I think it's just the matter of, you you need to know what model it is. I I I think a piece of work that we have to do, one is to say, is it sustainable in its current form? Otherwise, if we have to create it today, it wouldn't be sustainable tomorrow. You have to work out, work out what what model do you actually use? Because we can create a charity, but it's like GW Standing Force. If GW Standing Force doesn't get enough income, we as the corporate trustee pay for it. And so we might have a condition of liability at GW Standing Force if the occupancy and everything else doesn't doesn't improve. So you've got to have, you've got to work up the model, and secondly, you've got to test that model. And I think in the longer term, you know, and I think the comments that are made and 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 where the realising that it's potential, you know, the ability to get government, you know, to get lottery grants, the ability to to raise additional capital, all those are, those are things, but you've got to be able to do it from day one, you know, you've got to start from day one. So, you know, I I've always believed that we would have had to made a, made a red set of the charity now, it wasn't sustainable. And I don't think it is sustainable in its current, in its current form, it has to change. We would have actually transferred money from the town council to to the charity and that would be, that would be expensive somehow, because we wouldn't be seen as an investment.
Yeah, that, I guess, I may say, what do you need, what what is needed from us, what is stopping? You know, do you need to come to us with a presentation, okay, these are some models, see, do the things that work? How can you give you the space to do that? Because if that's going to drag down our budget, I think it's going to be a big thing to consider. And we need to consider how we can give you space for that.
The the town clerk has it, I I've heard agenda to start getting some answers and send between, to the forwards next month.
Yeah.
It's a few weeks away. So I think we will start asking those questions and looking at the options available for that.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you very much, David. One regarding the VE VJ Day, there's two public events being put forward. One early part of the year, one in sort of later in the year, one being put forward by the palace and whatever else, one being planned, and apparently many councils are getting involved in the earliest phase one as well. And we only do one VE VJ Day recommendation thing later in the year, that's the first thing. You're not aware of the earlier one?
I I think.
It's on a certain day.
Yeah, okay, in that case, I'll talk to you later on that one. That's fine, I'll show you the article, right, I'll cover that. And the second one though is, I'm afraid it's boring, it's Citizen Advice. In there, we've we're showing a, like a donation for this year, twenty four, twenty five, or thirty thousand. The contract isn't signed yet. Are we going to give them thirty thousand for the full year or so we won't be paying thirty thousand out?
In this current year.
In this current year, we'll be paying a bit out between, if we sign a contract within the next month, they're only going to be the sum they recruited, we're only going to be paying like three months' worth of stuff. Is that how it's going to work? Or have we got something else in mind?
Mine is failing, and I I I follow data today, is that we, the contract is ready to be signed. So I've got confirmation today that it's ready to be signed, we will organise that signing. And then, and then I presume this is advice will stop the recruitment.
Right, so it is a proportion of the thirty thousand for this year, and that's not thirty thousand, it's eight or whatever. Okay.
So without the budget forecast, it's one of the things that is a little bit more scientific. It actually, it doesn't include the full thirty thousand for this year, because the two, the contract is written, it's two years from the date that an employment starts for the advisor, not when we sign the contract.
So in this financial year, it's going to be peanuts.
It might be one quarter peanuts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, Freddie Moore? In that case, we need to note the report, are we happy to note the report?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We now have one, two, three, four, five, six policies that we need to look at. I've got to go through them individually, but I will introduce the six altogether. I know Alan's the lead, do you mind me?
Can we assume they've been read? Sorry, they're on here, aren't they?
They're in your agenda pack.
Yeah.
Are we going to assume they've been read from?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. They are on the agenda pack, so yeah, the assumption is that they have been read.
Thank you.
There are six policies here. I've got to say that these are crucial to the running of Thetford Town Council. The fact they weren't in in place is is suboptimal, shall we say? And the fact that the town clerk has spent so much time and effort putting them into a position where we can actually look at them and vote upon them speaks very highly of her, frankly. You can't run an organisation without these policies. Assuming that we've all read all of them, can I go through them one by one? If anyone's got any general comments before we start, should we do that now? And then, and then a chat afterwards. Thank you, Matt.
Just one general one, have these been floated by the HR company?
The disciplinary one has.
Okay.
The flexible working policy one was referred to, I don't think that that one's gone through.
Okay, with flexible working.
And the whistle blowing one hasn't, we we've done that, we didn't have one, that's referred to in our in our handbook. But certainly the disciplinary one has, we've actually done, we're going to make some changes to the handbook subsequent to, because we've actually changed the policy slightly.
The disciplinary one, AS, it's been floated, the flexible working, I'm not that bothered with it, it's not. I I can't imagine a HR issue coming up with a flexible working. And the whistle blowing one, I assume it's just the same one pulled from other councils, I suppose, I forgot.
It's almost a way to be really, really effective, you've actually got to, you you need an independent body. But we we just, you know, we don't have the resources. And and it would be nice if all the associations like NARC actually got together, you know, Norfolk NARC and all the other NARC got together and actually formed a whistle blowing organisation that we can. We've always made reference to it, but I think the comment that the chair made is, it's in our old handbook, but there never was a policy. So so it is, you know, and I think it will evolve in time.
Yeah, that's brilliant. Thank you very much. I am happy.
Okay, let's let's hammer through them then. Communications policy, has anybody got anything to say on that? We need to agree the policy, can I have a proposer and second please? Proposer David Blackmore, second, Mike Brindle, all in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous. Disciplinary policy, any comments? No, can I have a proposer and second, Matt Sturrock proposing, David Blackmore seconding, all in favour? Unanimous. Flexible working policy, any comments? Proposer? Mike Brindle, second, Doug Jefferson, all in favour? Thank you very much, unanimous. Wouldn't it be nice if everything was like?
I'm sure you'd like to do more so than once.
Freedom of information policy, any comments? Proposer? Ron, second, Annie, all in favour? Unanimous. Model publication scheme, not a policy. Any comments? Proposer please? Who hasn't done it? David, Doug, all in favour? Unanimous. And finally, whistle, probably the most important one thing, whistle blowing policy, any comments? Proposer? Matt Sturrock, second, wrong word, all in favour? Any?
I don't recognise that.
No, no, it's all right. I wasn't suggesting it had to vote for.
There's a spelling.
Unanimous. There's a spelling error. They put a Z on recognise, Americanism. Please take it out.
I'm quoting chapter and verse on that.
Um, I compare. I'm I'm all in favour of an S in this situation, so that's just.
Yeah.
Four two five twenty four, progress on actions from previous meetings of Chilean.
Let's get to it some more. The third one.
Um, next.
I used to hate this part of of the meeting previously, but I think finally we've managed to find, make some progress since the last meeting. What is still outstanding, there is a commentary on some of the items. The the impulses ones, we're slowly working towards towards doing them. There's one on the accounting standard, which goes back, I I can't understand why I haven't been able to 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 complete that, but I certainly will do that before the next meeting. But it's really, it's just a matter of of, we've we slowly, this is becoming more of a focus of us. At the moment, we just run from meeting to meeting and hope to hope to have that we had kind of followed up some of the issues. From this meeting, I think we've started to make a little bit more progress. So there's not too much to talk about, but I'm hoping in the next two or three months that this list will to climb quite significantly.
Thank you.
Comments? We need to request that the action points be updated based on the review, does that require a vote?
No.
No. Thank you. Four two six, committee officers update. Any information since the agenda was released or which requires the attention of the committee? Beautiful. Exclusion of press and public.
Everton's sorry. Thank you for coming.
Consider resolving the pursuant to the Public Bodies and Missions Meetings Act nineteen sixty, press and public be excluded for any remaining items on business grounds. The publicity will be prejudiced to the public interest by reason of confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Decision required whether or not to exclude the press and public, are we all in favour?
Aye.
Aye. I'll tell you, mate.
You just went into that.
Yes, or both.